Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 2023 monthly meeting. We have Cora that are opening the meeting for the announcement portion and our other trustees will be joining us shortly. This is quite a contrast from Monday night. So may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Foley. Trustee Woods, not here. Trustee Bozey.
Here.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Trustee Fatty is not here.
And when Trustee Woods arrives, do we need to note her as arrived when she comes in?
No, it'll be noted.
So a couple of announcements tomorrow's yard waste day. I see people have a lot of brown bags piled up waiting to go out. So get them on out there tomorrow. I wrote down the word Tuesday, but it's not coming into my mind why I wrote down the word Tuesday. Why don't you go to CCA and I'll see if I can pull it, yes?
Then our meeting, our meeting on Tuesday next week.
Oh, yes, next week, next week. Three of us are attending an ICOM conference in the Adirondacks and will be away on Wednesday. So our meeting next week will take place on Tuesday evening starting at 6:30. Thank you for that. And over to you, Laura, for a CCA announcement.
So maybe last month, the village or trustees voted to renew our involvement in the county trace aggregation, the CCA. So you should have received, I got mine today or sometime this week, a letter that describes what the CCA is, answers some questions and then explains what to do if you decide not to participate. So that would mean that you would, that you choose to go back to the central Hudson variable electricity pricing. So make sure you open that letter. It says from the village of Cold Spring and Direct Energy, which is the energy supplier. And it gives a few different options for how to opt out. One is that there's a stamped envelope and a card that you fill out and you can turn that in. Or there's a website that's listed and you and you put in your information and you can use that. I believe that there will also be, I don't have the date. There's going to be a meeting here where you could work with someone from the organization to fill out the paperwork. I think it's on maybe May 30th. It's in the letter. And then there's also customer service where you can call. If they don't answer, you leave a message and they'll call you back. So the goal is to make it really easy if you choose not to participate, to opt out and you have you have 30 days from May 10th to June 9th, opt out.
So many options, so many options. Okay, thanks. So we'll roll, I think I hear Trustee Woods coming in, we'll roll into reports to village departments. We don't have a written report from Michelle. Any, anything to report from Michelle?
What did not, it's not included in the packet, it's my mistake. Opera reporting was done, she, that was submitted on April 30th. The water meter endpoint is complete, 93% compliance on that. Quarterly payroll taxes have been filed. The old ban was paid off and new ban was issued for one year. That was done last week. She's working to find a credit card processor to accept payments at parking kiosks. Just a reminder for the board and for any department members that our fiscal year ends on May 31st. So any thing that you need that you want to get into this fiscal year, hurry up and do it.
That is a very productive. Roadways and facilities, we do not have Lexi with us tonight, but I will pull out some highlights from his monthly report. Just to give an update on the culverts on Fair Street, I did have a conversation with the village engineer. This week, the surveys are completed and are being produced for us. The work is completed. They are now scraping storm drains, et cetera, to get a lay of the underground land. And will be making some recommendations to us in short order. The guys have cleaned the underpass in preparation for prepping for paint. They've been doing a really fine job of very regular checking on dockside and pulling garbage. And maintaining the clean. I was from Highway. Do we have net? No, water and wastewater. The Aqua Duck connection work continues apace. They are at at the water plant now, working on that first location and have found some below ground infrastructure that was not known about, but is useful. I'm not an engineer, I can't explain it further. We'll have the engineer come in and give us an update. It has to do with six inch connections that were not known of before. The Derby was a success, fishing derby. So thank you to the water department for hosting and for the police department for making sure everyone was safe. And there's a Girl Scout troop going through the wastewater facility at the end of the month. They just need to know, you know, they need to know. Okay, building department, Jeff?
Picking up, there were 16 applications in the month of April. The numbers are here. There were three referrals generated to the HDRB. Total fees we collected was $1,700, 1720, and that's between application permit fees and municipal search fees. Also want to thank Greg, he's been he's been great about timely responses, especially to complaints.
Yes.
And concerns. He's very good at resolving these and you know, if we need to, if violations need to be issued, he issues them, but compliance is always his first goal and he's very good at getting people to walk through, talk through situations, get into compliance and so everybody can move forward. So.
For sure. We do have Officer in Charge Burke with us to give us another brief report.
Evening. We had 48 calls for service last month. Couple of things I'd like to note, the last couple of years, right around the month of April and May and so forth, I don't have any totals on May, which I'll give you next month. Fraud charges usually are elevated due to tax. When people file for the taxes, usually people get four during this time of year. It's down an extreme amount for last month and I'm happy about that. Normally this last couple of years, we've been averaging anywhere between five and eight for that month of April. And then usually many, we last couple of years, we got hit with between eight and 10 of different types of fraud, whether it's tax or whether it's somebody trying to get into a bank. So I'm glad to see there was only one so far. Also with that, we had this last month, we had two arrests. We had one, which was a return of a warrant. An individual came in and turned himself in and the warrant was actually out of Phillips Town. So my officer had to take her up and present her to Phillips Town. So that was a return on a warrant and the other one was for a harassment, 14505. For parking violations, we had five moving violations for the month. We had 21 parking tickets for a total of 26. Near the gate, all tickets total together, 191. Looking forward to having enforcement order to start more of their weekend. And that's all I have.
There's a big thing mentioned that Karen Herbert has been working on updating Lexi Paul with the policy revisions and she has now got them all into the system. Larry is reviewing them to make sure that they were recorded accurately and then they'll come to the trustees to review. So they've been through the ad hoc committee on community policing. Input it into the system. Larry's making sure they're correct and then they'll come to us for discussion. Yeah, she did it really fast.
Really fast. So it's gonna take a couple of days to get through it. It's pretty thick, but I'll try to do best I can again as we get.
It's gonna be great to have that loop closed. The next item is regrettable. I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Officer Vincent Demato. Benny has long served the village. How many, how many years?
He's probably been here eight or nine years. I think that.
My, when I was on the board the last time.
You hired him? Okay. He has done fantastic service for the village. He has been exceedingly helpful with the development of police policies and a very strong leader on the PBA. Sorry to see him go and wish him well. May I have a second, Paulie? Okay, all in favor?
Agreed, we are. And what's the process for hiring, assuming hire a new officer?
Right now, we're going to stay at the amount of 15. He was the 16th officer, so we're going to stay at that amount for now. I still have a bunch of resumes. I have listed one through five when help meeting does come, or if the board decides they want to hire additional officer, I can, I can go about that. So I have people waiting in the wings that want to come onboard.
You're comfortable with 15?
Right now, yes, absolutely.
And I'm fire company. Thank you, Larry. Jeff, the chief is not able to join us tonight, but as River knows, the fire company has been exceedingly busy in the last month dealing with brush fires. Thank God for the rain. And he wanted me to remind villagers that our streets are narrow and it's very important that you park tightly to the curbs, particularly on the narrower streets, so that emergency vehicles can get through. There's been a couple of bottlenecks recently. And by the way, for the, for the public, all of these reports are available in full online. It's not reading them all into the record for time. Okay, Justice Court, $7,297 in revenues, sick defendants. We have the DA here today, the DA for a case. Apparently they are short staffed, and so they sent the BGA. Pretty exciting stuff in Villatall. Okay, reports from the standing boards. Do we have any more for HRB? No. The HRB report reflects what Jeff reported from building apartment construction picking up as the season, we go into that season. And the board is actively reviewing windows and modifications to previous applications related to chimneys, gutters, et cetera. So the classic, the classic spring stuff. Hoping that there would be something this month on the design standards. Committed to having that draft to us by May, so I hope, follow up and see where that is. Okay, report of the planning board. So the planning board tomorrow night is meeting, please continue, or to open the public hearing on the extension of food town and to the former dry cleaners location. And they've taken up discussion of application and referral related to a tenant change next door and what used to be the Knights of Columbus building, it's an application to change of use to restaurant. I think it's a tea room or something like this, right?
Yeah.
So that'll be on their agenda tomorrow night. I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of that Goldstein as a planning board member. All in favor?
Aye.
And we got some Daniels who will be the interim chair of that board. No report from the zoning board, no new business. Recreation Commission, couple of things, the court is resurfaced and is going to be painted for multiple uses. Down there, Haldane has asked for potential modifications to the dog permit during Haldane, during baseball season. I know initial discussions have taken place with the rec commission. I'm actually going to go to their meeting this month to get caught up and see what they're thinking about. Just a need to obviously keep the field clean during, during season. And also noting in just report that we don't yet have a contract for weed control. And follow up with that. There are two events. We don't have the event planning with us.
She has vetted these and the rec commission has approved them.
Okay.
Lillian has vetted them and submitted them for approval to the board.
Are they weddings? Are they?
But it says on there.
Yeah, I believe they're both weddings.
Okay, so there's a proposal for use of a bandstand for 20 people, no amplified sound, no tent or canopy on August 2nd, 2023, from one to two. And any questions, concerns, discussion?
That's pretty tame. Want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the application from needing to use a bandstand on 9/23/23 at 2:00 PM.
Okay, so you've taken that, a motion has been put on the table for the September application, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now let's go back to the August event motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Frances Ferassi and Marissa Sarnelli to use the bandstand on 8/23 from one to two, estimated attendance, 20 people, five with sound.
Okay. I skipped tree advisory board. I'm going to do my best with this. This is an oral report from Jen. She was busy working on plantings right up until our meeting, so it hasn't put together a written report. New trees have been planted along the wall on Upper Main Street, the restored wall on Upper Main Street. You're going to see trees around the village being worked on for the next couple of weeks, through the end of the year, done, doing a push to get the end of the year and the budget year work done. There are a number of new plantings on Main Street, putting a red bud in front of Village Hall, which makes me very happy. And calorie pairs. So the calorie pairs on Main Street are going to look terrible for a while. Just to say, if you remember back over the winter, Cornell Cooperative Extension had proposed using Cold Spring as a case study for grafting of calorie pairs with another variety of that tree to, to see if more storm resilience can be bred into the trees. So they have been cut back. And you'll begin to see graftings. They're just, they're going to look straggly for a while, but there's a, there's a greater goal here.
Is that what was happening today?
Yes, there may have been a tree, oh no, the tree in front of, no. Dental store came down today. Yeah, that one, that one.
Tony, the other one, so.
And they're pretty, the other ones.
What branch of the restaurant should be cleaned? There's a big branch coming out.
The cherry tree?
Yeah, my, when we came back from the nursery today, the fellow that was helping, he said that that branch, if it isn't trimmed back, the first time it gets in the ice on it, it will slump.
Okay, do you want to, can you communicate again? Thank you. Town, have I gotten everybody? Yeah, you showed me the bandstand, yes, municipal partners. Let's see, what's new? Thank you to Phillips Town and Nelsonville for co-hosting the public meeting with us on Monday night. Just doing a quick scan of Bobby's report here. Ah, big news, passed a resolution approving the indemnity agreement for construction of emergency communications tower on the town property by the Salts, Salt Fed. It's good to see that moving forward. That puts us closer to better communications on the side. So they have fracked all, all wells, all the three wells they have at Garrison Landing Water District and the water supply looks promising. So hopefully they'll be able to reduce and then eliminate trucks. Those are the big, those are the big items. Okay, and Lieutenant McFermi is not able to join us this evening. Thank you to her also for attending and listening to the public on Monday related to Fuhr Trail. Also want to thank her and the county executive. We have had, I'll talk more about it later, but we've had really excellent forward motion on inter municipal collaboration over the last few weeks. And Nancy has been very helpful in arranging meetings and conversations and I'm grateful for it. To that in my report. Well, I guess that's what's next. I've been talking a lot. Anyone else like to make a report first?
Shouldn't Parker's on the kiosk?
I've got that under business.
Later.
Yeah, under business.
Okay.
You don't have to have anything to report. Couple of things, just on my notes. So just notes from, if anyone wants to have a limited conversation about last night, I, things that made me very happy last night were the commitment to Monday night, sorry, this week is just all bleeding together. Monday night was the, was the commitment to provide an independent traffic consultant for the village and the site and to pay for it. We need to have follow-up conversation. They referred to a, to a committee, an oversight committee. We need to have conversations with that to talk about what that looks like. And how those folks are pointed, they need to come through the village. The link to the video is up on the website. And tonight we have put up to do, but we do need to come back to figuring out our next steps. The questions are entered, already entered into our, the 210 questions are entered into the public record on our website. My comments will be added into the record in that section of the website as well. And they committed to answering all 210. So we need to make sure that happens and decide what next steps are. Go ahead.
It was also great to hear a commitment to provide meeting minutes and more transparency.
Yes.
That was great to hear. Another thought, but just to say maybe we'll talk about it more with planning, but you know, there was also public comments outside of the 210 questions and so it'd be good to make sure that that is memorialized in writing. Yeah, your comments and questions at the end, in addition to the 210.
I believe that Mayor, Mayor Winward, Mayor Winward committed to summarizing the the delivered comment. So I'll follow up with her on that. Okay, we're already back to progress and partnership with the county. So Larry and I met with resident Hassel, Parks Police, the state police, the town of Fishkill Police, and the sheriff's department at the request of the undersheriff to talk about pedestrian safety along, hi, pedestrian safety along 90. And access to 290. We're all aware that the train station is closed. The breakneck train station is closed temporarily until early July while repairs are done or build construction is done on, on the trailhead there. So while that station is closed, I think it's fair to assume that we're going to get a lot of foot traffic from our train station through the village and out. So recommendations were made by the officer in charge and the parks director, I'm not director, parks manager Evan Thompson, I always want to say it in my hands, Evan Thompson, Evan Thompson regarding, in particular, optimizing the trolley. Look, it's not ideal, but it's the one public transportation asset we have here. And it shifted the conversation to have the request, I think, coming from law enforcement for using that trolley in a way to, to reduce usage. So we had a follow-up session today, actually on Monday, follow-up session with the county executive and the transportation director to talk about the really low hanging fruit that we can grab to solve, to temporarily solve, or at least help address pedestrian movement. We talked about identifying sites that could be temporarily signed as actual get on, this is where you stand to get the trolley. The trolley having magnets installed saying where it's going to the trailheads. I mean, this is really like really low lying stuff, but it's, it needs to happen. And broader, broader access to the schedule. So it is already, the schedule is already aligned with train arrivals. The federal funding for the trolley requires the schedule to be approved in public hearing by the legislature. It was last approved in 2021. They have not had a public hearing since or proposed change since. So the schedule that is established for, for that was a schedule, was established then is what applies now because there's been a public hearing and they, there's not time to change it, but you know, it'll be into August by the time they get it on through committee and up to the legislature. So we have to work with the schedule we have. Luckily, they're timed with trains. And the schedule does build out to the different trailheads. Today, they brought the trolley over. We, it currently stops at the train station. It used to stop at the bottom of Main Street. Sort of turn around and back down in, which is exceedingly dangerous when there are a lot of people and the transportation, the county actually and you have an outside company doing that contract? The actual operation of public transportation happens by contract with a company called MB. And the contract negotiation, negotiations with its drivers doesn't want the drivers backing up. So going back to that, and it is, it is just too dangerous with all the people getting off the trains there. So the trolley currently stops, a stop sign on Long Terrace. It's a safe for a place to stop than there. It's hard for cars to get around it. You just missed your big moment, Bobby. Welcome to stay.
Thank you.
The proposal is to add a, add a sign on the crosswalk sign there to make it formalized as the place you stand for the trolley. So we'll get all of this written up in a, in a proposal to you all for approval. This is, this is not installing, not big shake. You're looking skeptical. It's not installing its actual stops. It's like the very basic stuff to identify where people need to stand.
It's my, I'm really impressed at the progress that you've made, given like so much effort to get the, the trolley to be more workable for visitor's needs. So it's actually like I'm, I am impressed and hopeful that that they keep to their commitments.
Well, I mean, thank, thank Officer in Charge. It made a difference to have law enforcement leaning in on it.
Yeah.
And also I will say, the county executive was very supportive of positive progress and he's been, he's been fantastic to work with and that has never happened. As long as I can remember, in east-west relation, so it's a good thing. The second piece of cross-county business is that out at our impoundment along Fishkill Road, Beaver Dam impoundment. That impoundment is maintained daily by the water and wastewater team. They pull sticks as needed to, to increase flow. They, they'll drop it down in advance of storms. The access to that area, and the dash, I should say again, so that folks are aware that, that the beavers are, that's free labor. They're excellent dam builders. We want the dam there. The dam helps us contain another, another source of impounded water. The county is concerned about the road flooding in advance of storms. Matt does actively manage it ahead of storms. Their concern is if we, if there were to be a flash situation, the roadway, the little pull-off that gets you down to the beaver pond area, Beaver Dam area is very soft surface and they're concerned about getting emergency vehicles in. Soil and water, you know, trucks to get people down there to pull stuff out in an emergency. The county highway department today, actually just a few hours ago, proposed to construct a hardened surface there to get, so the trucks can get in and out of there easily. That's a good thing.
And they will do it and they're going to, they'll do it.
They have to apply for permits. It's not our property. We manage it, but it's part of Parks' property and DEC has to give permits as well, but another step forward. That's, that's a good thing. They are also willing to entertain proposals for some of the Fair Street work to be a shared service project. So it's been a very, it's been a very productive few weeks.
The Fair Street, you mean the underground water line.
Right, yeah, right. And that is a shared, it's a shared road.
Yeah.
County owns part of it and their, their big trucks are driving over it all of the time, well, in the winter to get, because it felt shit. So yeah, so it's, it's a way we can both benefit. I did get, right before the meeting, I got a draft IMA from West Point regarded, regarding the ferries. I haven't read it. Let's get forwarded to the bill attorney, but they did send it today. Okay. Go ahead.
Reminder that two weeks ago at the board meeting, the board had agreed to start the meetings at 6:30 while the public hearing continues for the code update in the chapter. So going forward, as long as the public hearing is open, the meetings will be starting at 6:30. We'll let, to enable board business to happen and then. Will allow to enable board business to happen and then roll into the code update. So.
And again, next week is on Tuesday.
And next week is on Tuesday.
There are no further reports. We'll roll into board business. The first is approval, one year renewal of the contract with EFPR for auditing services. Philip has been working with EFPR for quite a long time. I'd make a motion. Now, you're, you're authorizing me to sign. So come on up.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement or to sign. Uh, one year renewal contact with EFPR for auditing services.
The next item is a follow up. The ad hoc working group on community policing recommended the removal of uniformed officers from. Vehicle and traffic negotiation. And the board budgeted to do that. So what we have in front of us is the contract. Andres Gil, who's our prosecutor by contract, who expand his services to vehicle and traffic.
I make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Andres Gil to provide representation for the being to.
Okay, Meliza.
All right, so we're getting closer, everybody. We're working on getting parking kiosks in, which would be meters on the street. We were gonna, you've got signs ordered. They're coming. For metering by mobile phones on Main Street, but we also wanted to go ahead and have a kiosk, which we all approved. We've ordered three, one for the parking lot over at Fair Street and then two for Main Street. And I've put together a proposal with four different location options to consider. I would say, well, we need to pick two and I would recommend doing two that are separated fairly enough. So that it's sort of an even spread. The locations that I'm proposing are either a combination of Church Street in front of the old hardware. And Village Hall in front of Village Hall or Garden Street, the corner of Garden Street and Main in front of the pizza shop. And down at Depot Square, just across the street from the visitor center with the sidewalk is a little bit wider.
Are you proposing them in those combinations?
Yes, in those combinations. So I have pictures of what that would look like for people to consider. So the first combination would be here and here. That's Village Hall and then Church Street and then the second combination will start in Depot Square. They'll all be parallel and straight.
And but has Bugsy looked at those locations?
He, he's received these, but we are going to meet with the company that provides the kiosk on Monday. Make sure that these sites are all suitable. So this is sort of a decision pending that meeting.
So right now, what you're asking for is feedback on the locations that you're going to discuss with the, okay. My concern about the lower, the one down in Lower Main Street is that there's so much visual activity going on there with. Visitor Center and cars turning. I'm, I'm wondering if that will get lost in the visually there.
That's mine.
Except you can make the opposite argument too, that like because those spots are heavily. Well, not so much flooding in, but people will use it. You know, they'll like actively, they'll see it because they're going to be.
I wonder, though, like you don't pay to park on Depot Square, right? So maybe there aren't actually that many. There aren't that many paid parking. Are there?
So it's, that's at the end of the whole thing and up here is a block that won't have, the closest one will be. Here. If we do, yeah, Garden Street, if we did the Depot Square, Garden Street combinations. Personally, I would prefer doing the two middle, like more central located. Village Hall and, and Church Street.
The one that used to be at.
I do like the one in front of Village Hall. My only suggestion would be, and it would be posted on our website and clearly. When people go down to the visitor center, it could be like somewhere within, around the visitor center, whether it could be attached to, to the building itself. Or out a little bit, because you can turn around and say, the visitor center, the visitor center is right there. So is the kiosk to pay for parking. Instead of the opposite sides. Correct, correct. There'd be people going down there anyway.
So my, my thinking on that was that if people who were parking like. East of that, up Main Street, were coming down and they were just coming to pay their meter. Having all those people crossing that street might just add more sort of pedestrian traffic in that sort of heavily. For people you turning and stuff.
We're assuming that everybody's using a kiosk, but that's not necessarily the case.
This is the backup for people who can't, can't get a signal or can't figure out how to use the app. It's a backup.
Yeah, this is not the primary way to pay for the parking.
So it sounds like you have a preference for by the visitor center and Village Hall.
That's what I would think, even as a backup. Village Hall is the main, middle of, middle of the whole. Now, I think you, you do that and the other one probably, I would maybe up by Church Street, yeah.
That, that seems sensible to me.
We'll make some of their peppered options and then I'll report back after we find out if those are.
Maybe when, when you have that conversation, because it's going to make a difference to you for where car doors get opened, getting in on a, in a block. Passenger side. Hopefully it won't often make a difference for.
It won't be like anyone, someone can slam their car.
Although that tree is new, so it's, it's, it hasn't extended out yet. They'll grow around it.
These kiosks will accept cash?
No, credit cards only, unless you would like to go collect cash from Kias.
You should have now.
A motion to approve batch six nine oh nine and another seventy three thousand nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and forty five cents. Nice to see that we got our changing tables.
Oh, you mean you saw the bill for it?
I always comment, like, myself, my city, you know, just to let people know what we're spending money on.
Okay, so now we move into. The continuation of the public hearing on chapter seventy six. The noise, one of our four signs and zoning. We have with us again Consultant Planner Ted Fink. Hi. And Jonathan DeJoy is with us from.
Hi, everybody.
Okay, so let's first start out by reviewing the progress over the last week. So the draft EAF, the environmental assessment form was updated to reflect. Revised calculations and a couple of other items. Ted's gonna walk us through that. That draft. Was received this afternoon, is on the web, is up on the website, right, already? The ad hoc working group met to discuss the public comments related to form based zoning and housing affordability within the PMU. As well as street standards. Good points were raised about street standards. They are formulating recommendations for the trustees. There were map legibility improvements. The striping of the underwater parcels, there were some folks in the public who couldn't see the striping. And it turns out that some PDF viewers failed to show the stripes in versions, in earlier versions of the map. So the map has been modified so that the stripes appear, should appear in all PDF viewers. If anyone has trouble, still has trouble seeing them, let us know. Every PDF viewer should be able to show them now. The colors, the color differentiation was increased between the RL and ERC districts. As well as the civic and multifamily districts. And we are still awaiting comments from the planning board. They're in session tomorrow night and I know they are meeting with at least Jonathan. I don't, are, are you joining the planning board tomorrow night, Ted?
I, yes, I would be available to join the planning board for tomorrow night.
I don't, I don't know if they've requested it. I know at some point they had you on calendar, but I don't know what those days are. They are meeting tomorrow.
Yep, I haven't had a confirmation, so I think I'd have to confirm with the planning board. Yeah.
Okay, so goals for tonight. Discussing. Implementation of the current comp plan versus comp planning going forward. So let's, we'll just spread it in one drill. Start on that topic as a first topic. So there have been a number of questions about, you know, why, why are we implementing now? Man, Ted, were you able to, are you able to share? The document I sent?
As soon as I'm allowed to do that. Yes, I can do that.
Processes are, represent moments in time. What we are proceeding with now and have, have been proceeding with. Since two thousand twelve when it was adopted, right? There were, there are other changes that have, that have taken place in the village code and village policies to reflect recommendations. We are continuing ahead on the zoning and code perspective at this time with the two thousand twelve recommendations. For which the conditions are largely unchanged. Rezoning of Marathon for mixed uses. Building in zoning mechanisms to ensure that new development in Marathon does not exacerbate traffic and parking issues in the village. And well integrated with the community. Have a good tour. Oh, I see. Make possible the development of various housing types, preserve Mayor's Park. As recreation space officially, assure that zoning and land use regulations support the character of cold spring. And consider form based standards for new construction and reconstruction. So that's where we are now. The, the larger question of what happens next, next happens a code update. I'm sorry, a comprehensive plan update. There are a number of items that have been raised in public comments. That I wanted to talk about tonight that I think are better addressed as part of a comp plan update. Sort of focusing on those issues where the context for the recommendation in two thousand twelve has changed. And they need to be revisited as part of an update. So, and some of them have come from the public, some have come from our discussions. One is allowing higher height and new waterfront construction to account for. River rise and inundation, continued and modified use of the highway department parcel, future uses at the boat club site. And planning for resident relevant programming and infrastructure at dockside. So those are some big items from the comprehensive plan that have not been followed up on and need discussion as part of an update. Ted, do you have anything to add to that intro before we talk about it?
Well, there was, there were some comments that were raised in previous public hearing sessions. About affordable housing and the need for affordable housing. And there was a suggestion made that. One way to be able to do this was through incentives provided to developers. And in the modifications that I've made to the, to the environmental assessment form, the part three. Narrative of the secret document that's required for the village boards. You know, to ensure that the village board complies with the secret requirement for environmental review, I've added a section on affordable housing. And one of the things that is pointed out in, in that section is what would be the ramifications of having. A incentive zoning program that would be specifically designed to. Require a certain amount of affordable housing, any new development within the village. And one of the things that I think is important to understand is that there's a whole section of New York State Village Law. Section seven dash seven oh three that involves what the village would have to do in order to establish an incentive zoning program. For something like affordable housing. And it's, it's quite involved and requires specific studies of. Of infrastructure, the environmental studies and so forth. And that's possibly another. Possibility for the comprehensive plan update is to begin to look at the need for portable housing, how it could be. Addressed by the village board and that may include an incentive zoning program. It may include a variety of other options. That are also out there for municipalities in New York State to, to look into. So that the, the housing needs of all residents, regardless of, of income level can be properly addressed. And I think it's important to also understand that there are a lot of. I guess you could, you could call it soft approaches that we've used in the proposed zoning. Modifications that are on the table right now for chapter one thirty four and they're peppered throughout the document. And so I've, I've tried to list as many as I could find within the zoning that would relate to. To those sorts of things. I think I came up with seventeen or eighteen separate features in the zoning that actually address. Two of the policies that were, were part of the comprehensive plan in two thousand twelve. That essentially said that, you know, to provide for a diversity of new housing. Within the village to ensure that the, the housing needs of all its residents are, are properly addressed. So it, it has been addressed in the current zoning. There are still many other things that could be done. But I think it takes additional time and studies in order to properly carry those out. And rather than delay the process at this point with additional work that, that really should be done comprehensively. As part of a comprehensive plan update, I would certainly recommend that it await, you know, the next iteration of the comprehensive plan. So I think that's, that would be my recommendation anyway, at this point.
The shifting, shifting that conversation to a larger update conversation.
Yes, yes, because it, there really, it does take a lot of time to discuss all of the different. Tech tools and techniques that are available to the village board to try and increase the, the amount of affordable housing that's available in the village. But the primary way that it's, it's being done now is through loosening some of the. Rules for multifamily housing, introducing new housing concepts for the marathon site in the. Draft rules that have been prepared for the planned mixed use zoning district. And I think there is a bigger conversation there and many other communities are, are doing the same thing right now. Because affordable housing has been a pretty, pretty important issue that's been on the table for, for quite a long time now. And it's, it's become more extreme and we have state publications that have come forward. And I, I think there's been, there was a lot of discussion with the legislature just before the budget was adopted about whether or not the state would begin to. Mandate some sort of, of affordable housing requirements. Other states are going in that direction. The legislature didn't do it this year in New York, but I think it's certainly incumbent on, on any community. That cares about the housing needs of its, its residents and its obligation really under law to ensure that. Regional housing needs are met as well.
Did you say regional?
Yes, yes, regional housing needs. That's, that is basically, it's an implied obligation of, of all communities in New York State. And basically it's, it, you know, there, there have been quite a number of court cases on this and Jonathan may want to talk about it. I, I can't really talk from the legal perspective. What I, what I can tell you is that. The, the New York's courts have paid careful attention to exclusionary zoning. And if it's not done with regard to local and regional. Um, and if it's not done with regard to local and regional housing needs, then zoning can have an exclusionary effect. Uh, so Jonathan, I don't, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, uh, but it is something I think it's a responsibility of all municipalities to do that. And certainly many other, uh, most of the other communities that I work for are all, um, quite aware of, of the, uh, their affordable housing, uh, needs.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. And like Ted said, there's, um, you know, a lot of legislation in the works, uh, that may change things over the next, uh, couple of years. So, you know, there, there's definitely a focus on affordable housing, that's for sure.
Can I ask a question about that? So say there is legislation that is not, you know, it's, it hasn't happened now, but it happens in the next couple of years. What happens to, um, a code that's adopted? Does it need, how does, how do we come into compliance or are we expected to come into compliance? How does that work?
Well, uh, it would depend on, um, I guess how the code is written and whether it requires municipalities to go back and update, uh, codes. But, uh, if it does, you know, there will be a, uh, a long period to come into compliance and it would likely just involve, uh, probably a small amendment.
So, how, how are we feeling about the overall approach of identifying elements that belong in a longer planning process and identifying them as sort of update categories?
I think it's, um, a wise approach because it puts things that weren't in the comprehensive plan, like, you know, like we're not just beginning creative with it, so it allows us to focus on the work that needs to be done immediately. And then I think, you know, we do need to update comprehensive plans so that we can, as a community, make decisions to move forward.
Very different community than it was in twenty twelve. Absolutely. And also
Hugely different.
Recognize now, you know, hats off to everyone who did that process. What we're talking about now is actual update. The nineteen eighty-seven plan versus the two thousand twelve plan. There's so much more meat and content and it is a true updating, um, as opposed to building out the groundwork, which is what, what had to be done in the, in the twenty twelve process. There was a lot of sort of elemental structural planning that needed to happen. So in the same way that Phillips Town has recently updated its identified elements of its standing comprehensive plan that need to be updated. This is a similar process of saying, okay, we know we need to talk more about these things. These would be the priorities. Uh, we're not setting tonight what the priorities that I explained is saying, I'm asking about, I'm sort of looking for concept approval on a recommendation that when that process happens, these are the items, these are some of the, among the items that are considered. Am I making sense when I'm saying that? These are the kinds of items that weren't contemplated there, right? The other, the other Well, affordability was, but not in the way that Ted is talking about it. Sure. Um, the highway department was discussed, the highway department location was, is mentioned in the previous plan, the boat club location is. Um, resident relevant programming at dockside is all there, but in those cases, the the context of, the context of those locations has shifted dramatically with visitor impacts. And thinking about how we, how we use those assets may be different than it was in two thousand twelve. Well, we've identified the things that, that continue to make sense from that comprehensive plan and identify, and identify the things that need to revisit. So how do we do that? Like, what's the, what's the practical steps forward to? Well, so when we get to, when we get to, I have taken, we, we've taken all of the questions that have been given either in writing or in comment, comment. Built out a spreadsheet and identified, um, recommendations for those elements. So we've got a chunk coming forward this week with recommendation for among these, shifting them to identifying them as comprehensive plan update items. Jonathan, do you want to? Do you have anything to add about how that, how an update takes shape?
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, you know, the board would, um, take action to approve an update, a comprehensive plan committee would be established, they would uh, receive input from various bodies. Uh, I don't, I don't know if I could really list out all the, the steps to the process, but that's kind of the, the gist of it.
I'm sharing out with the board and it's on the village website. Um, that have, in the same way we did last week where we took questions and had answers, prepared answers. John reviewed them, we made them available to the public. This spreadsheet is identified, uh, actions that we need to agree on. Um, so I know the print is tiny, Jeff's going to share it on screen so that we can actually see it. So we've covered, we've talked about affordability. Are you able to go larger on the? So my thought was we would go through the recommendations individually. Um, and this, this list of what is seems appropriate for a next comprehensive planning process grew out of public comment and these recommendations from the ad hoc group. Um, so there are about twelve items. First is, um, came by the planning board related to marathon sites. One on page, what was one thirty, one thirty-four, forty-two, we recommend that quote, "The development may authorize a departure from the density or intensity of use established for the entire project for each phase to be developed." That it should read, "The development should be required to reduce the density of any subsequent phase. Should any fade, when combined with previously construction phases, exceed the approved overall project density." Um, the ad hoc group thought that idea made sense and recommended the trustees consider this modification. So that is the first. I think that we do, so we can, Ted has, has the direction and means to make modifications in draft.
Are we, uh, proposing to accept the working group's recommendation or will?
If you would like to accept it.
But I mean, as opposed to
No, no, so they're saying
Certain structural motion.
Got it. So this is a recommendation from the planning board, having reviewed that section, saying this language change makes sense. Ad hoc working group looked at it in the context of the larger chapter and says, yes, the planning board is right. That modification makes sense. Trustees, what do you think?
Well, I agree.
Okay. So Jeff, do we, do we need to actually motion out each of these?
We should.
Okay.
I think a motion to accept the, um, recommendation of the ad hoc working group. Um, that came from Jack Goldstein on behalf of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, next, related to residential districts. Um, this came from Michael Armstrong. Can we allow three-story buildings in the large lot residential area because existing buildings in that district are already three stories? And would be non-conforming under the proposed code. The working group thinks that this idea makes sense and recommends the trustees consider this mod- modification. Um, it's a lot of, it's a lot of pulling out. It already has three story and it does make sense.
It really made sense when you said it.
Yeah.
The idea is to reduce, um,
Non-conformity.
This is certainly in mind.
Okay.
A motion to accept the working group's recommendation, uh, Mark, Mike Armstrong to allow three-story buildings in the four.
RL. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Um, this recommendation came from Judith Rose. This was a, a larger discussion. Jeff, are you able to, um, go over to the portion with red and make that more visible? So this relates to, it's part of our conversation related to, um, affordability in the village and, uh, accessory housing. Um, her recommendation was, "Under accessory housing, I suggest you ease up on the requirement that there cannot be a change to the existing foundation or roof line of the primary structure." "We should be encouraging more accessory units, and if they meet all other requirements, why not allow some changes?" This would require site plan review. Um, if it's in the district, it would also require HDRB review. So there is a, there are checks, there are checks in place. And so her, her thinking was, why not allow people to do that if it allows us to expand accessory housing? Um, and uh, it was Eric Worth, um, who recommended the removal of the first sentence in that section and that item to make that possible, to delete no exterior changes or expansion which may alter the existing condition, the existing foundation of the one-family dwelling. Its existing roof line or existing facade may be made to the principal one-family dwelling except for the installation of a separate entrance to serve the accessory apartment. To delete that sentence and what would remain is "The structure in which the accessory apartment is located shall have only one front entrance and only one entrance from any other facade of the structure, and exterior entrance leading to a foyer with interior entrances leading from the foyer to the dwelling units will be acceptable pursuant to this requirement." Discussion.
Um, I support this as well. Um, I think the accessory units are kind of the only way that we can add affordable housing at the moment, um, outside of the mixed-use development. So I would support this.
And it's, it's essentially like putting an addition on your house, the way that you do for other reasons, right? And so you're still complying with the other requirements in the code for adding something to your house that just put in the skates for an accessory.
The other point is that, um, the STR code that is coming down the chute is, um, does not allow STR, like accessory units to be used as SDRs, so these would be strictly for apartment and dwelling only. So people can't turn the backyard into a hotel, which I also support.
Yeah, that's a good call. And again, the property owner would still have to meet bulk requirements, would still have to meet setbacks. If they're in the district, they still need to go through HDRB approval like any other addition. Would you like to make the motion, Catherine?
Um, make the motion to accept the ad hoc working group's recommendation to remove.
Yeah, I guess just read it.
To hit the, uh, text to, um,
To the section. Remove the first sentence from one thirty-four, seventeen G twelve.
Yeah, just, and, and the web, uh, just do the first sentence of one thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
It's gonna be It's gonna be clumsy.
I think if you just say, make a motion to accept this recommendation.
Right? Get us out of here faster. Okay, um, this is also Michael Armstrong recommendation, "Consider allowing height on waterfront to be higher to accommodate flood-ready construction and inundation." This is one of those items, I think Laura raised the point of the unintended consequence of, of changes like that. Um, go ahead.
My experience living in Rhode Island was that it was passed there for good reason, um, but it made for these very, very tall buildings with, um, the kind of open area underneath them. So I think you want to understand carefully what is the implications and if we're making buildings too tall compared to their neighbors.
So this is one of the recommendations to, um, for comprehensive plan updates. Perhaps to have that discussion there. Um, is the board in favor of that recommendation? And if so, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept that recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, now broader, um, broader comments on all districts. Um, this recommendation comes from Marie Early. Um, "In the proposed company, accessory structures of two and a half stories are permitted in RORL, V one, V two, V three, and V four. An accessory structure of two and a half stories is particularly inappropriate in any R districts. The height of such an accessory structure would be overwhelming in scale in most zoning districts. You might want to reconsider the allowable height." Um, the ad hoc working group, um, agreed with Marie and recommends to the trustees that we um, establish a maximum height of one and a half stories on accessory structures in the residential zones.
Motion to
Any discussion before that?
I think it's a, a sound recommendation. Um, we don't want people building houses in their backyards, basically. And it's really just to make better use of things like carriage houses that already exist. So I would, um, second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay. Okay. Um, the next is a, um, I have a graphical error that needs correction. One thirty-four fourteen describes the scenic view shed overlay district in the table of contents. It is identified as SVO. And one thirty-four three, it is referred to as SCO. And one thirty-four, it is referred to as SVO. And the EAF is referred to as SVO and three times as SCO. I believe the correct acronym is SVO. Like Ben and White, trying to numbers. Marie, you are correct. Um, and this is, this is part of the process of working through a draft, um, and thank you for finding things that were missed. So, um, I would make a motion to accept that correction. All in favor?
Hi.
And Ted will be, you're going to be following up on text changes and we'll talk more with Jonathan about process, how that works going in a bit. We're going to get through these first. Um, Ted, do you want to move the, um, the scroll down and over? The next is also an editorial catch by Marie. Thank you very much. Um, clarifying that superintendent of highways should be highway crew chief. She is correct. The ad hoc committee agrees and recommends that change.
I'll make a motion to accept that, uh, adjustment.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Another Mike Armstrong question, what about the reuse of a highway parcel? And going back to our conversation, uh, just a few minutes ago, um, feeling as if that, um, the ad hoc, the ad hoc working group feels that that too is another one of the topics that needs to be revisited as part of a comprehensive plan update, given all of the context changes. Discussion?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this, uh, recommendation.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Uh, this is just confirming what I described when we opened the session, that the map and the stripes on the maps were not viewable in all PDFs. Viewers, the map has been modified so that it can be. If anyone else continues to have trouble, let us know. Um, this isn't really, there's nothing really to accept other than thank you, Eric, for making the modification. Um, and the same with the next item, which is the color differentiation being enhanced between RL and ERC and the orange and salmon colors of C and MF. Where their editorial elements on chapter one, chapter seventy-six, annotated comments and document need to be removed, recommends Marie Early. She is right. The ad hoc committee agrees. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that recommendation.
Favor?
Hi.
Um, editorial, um, yes, Marie, the, um, one seventy-six, there is a reference to a place in the city. You're right, that was a, a cut and paste from, um, another code and that those, that language should have been deleted. So thank you for that catch. Um, the committee recommends that the trustees accept that modification to the draft.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Favor?
Hi.
Okay, um, and in signs and placards, um, chapter one oh four. Um, the working group had proposed changing the name to simply signs, placards is an outdated term and a specific type of sign. Um, Marie Early raised the point that, that changing the name of chapter one oh four has repercussions for chapters with cross-reference, littering, HDRB, upper lighting standards, streets and sidewalks. Um, and it's a fair um, and justifying the, those chapters requires public hearings for such a minute issue that the, uh, makes no, it doesn't make any substance, substance, excuse me, substantiate, I can't say the word substantive, thank you. Or material difference to the content of the chapter and its intended regulation. Simple solution, which the ad hoc working group recommends to the trustees is to leave the title as is. Simple solution which the ad hoc working group recommends to the trustees is to leave the title as is. Discussion.
Oh, it's funny to me.
Motion, or any other discussion?
No.
Oh, make a motion to accept this recommendation.
On favor?
Hi.
Okay, so Ted, you have editing instruction on. Several of those and there's obviously much more to come back to and subsequent discussion.
Yes.
Um. And we were talking earlier about comparability of. Older codes and newer codes and among the reasons that. This code looks so different, the, the revised draft looks so different is that it is. Fifty years newer. Um, and can you, can you talk to us about regional comparisons, comparisons of other recently? Updated municipal codes, particularly in our region. Um, and what they have in common with what, what is proposed to the trustees?
Yeah, well. First of all, I think, um, affordable housing is, is an issue that many municipalities are addressing right now. Um, in fact, Elster County. Um, has quite a, um, quite a robust task force that's working on affordable housing. Um, services that they're providing to municipalities throughout the county in an attempt to try and get every municipality in the county. Um, onboard with addressing the need for housing for people of moderate or lower means. Um, so that's, that's a big issue that many municipalities are working on right now. Um, I think the, um, most municipalities are all trying to keep up with changes to state law. Um, there are many that. Um, like Cold Spring, um, that. Simply had not updated their zoning to comply with new, uh, changes. For instance, the site plan, especially use permit procedures, um, and, um. And a variety of other features, uh, such as the zoning board, um, area and use variance standards. Um, those are part of the code that's been built in now for Cold Spring. Um, I think there's a, there's a recognition also in many communities. Like Cold Spring, um, especially the older Hudson Valley communities, traditional communities, uh, that really they needed to pay attention to. Um, trying to figure out ways to be able to make their communities more walkable, more inviting to people that, um, would prefer to use. Um, their two feet, uh, or bicycles to, to get around. And so many communities are also addressing, um, parking standards. Um, and realizing that, um, there is a, a, a growth over supply of parking. Um, even though there's, you know, so much of it has to do with perception and not necessarily, um, the real. Issue of, of having adequate parking. And I think it's also, um, a recognition that. We're seeing now a procrastination actually that, um, when it comes to, um, how much land has been devoted to parking. Um, and the induced demand that parking, uh, can contribute to traffic congestion, that these are issues that really. Um, are front and center in many communities now in an attempt to try and become climate smart communities. Uh, and do what they can to try and, and get people out of their cars. Uh, adopting healthier lifestyles, um, devoting more land to housing rather than parking cars. Um, so those are, those are some of the big issues that I, I think are facing a lot of communities now. Um, and you know, other than that, um, open space is always an important issue. People want more parks. They want more areas to be able to recreate. They want more. Uh, um, more of, of nature that's left, um, you know, in the development review process. Um, so I think, you know, these are some of the issues that are, are being tackled now by other communities, um, and Cold Spring is, is in a good position now, I think. Um, to, um, to move forward with the, the changes that have been proposed. Uh, and then it's time to, to update again, the comprehensive plan and to begin the process all over again.
So can, can we talk through? That, that process itself, um. So it is, it is iterative, right? We're.
Yep, yes, it is.
Responding, we're responding to comment, we're, we're all, we're all synthesizing our own thoughts about what we've read. Um, we are waiting for the planning boards comment. Um, and need to make response, uh, modifications based on that, on their substantive. These substantive issues they identify. So how does this practically work, Jonathan and Ted, from a next step standpoint? When is? When is the next? Uh, draft? Available for review? For the public to review and for us to have. Public conversation about, um, and how does that play out in terms of? Public hearing process? I don't know which one of you wants to take it, but that would be a useful instruction to have from you.
Sure. So I, I think you're, um, my connection lagged out for a second there, but I think you're, you're talking about Ted's next draft of the, uh, amendments.
That's right.
So the public hearing is open and, um, as long as the public hearing is open and the public has an opportunity to comment. Um, there's really no issue with, you know, kind of presenting the drafts as they become available. You know, i- if, if changes get to the point where. They are, you know, so substantial that they're no longer talking about what was previously discussed, then, you know, you kind of have to look at, um. You know, o- opening a new public hearing, but I, I don't, I don't think that's really the issue here based on the changes that are being discussed.
And, and just to be clear. We have a set of recommendations tonight that we talked through, but it's not the last, right? They'll do. All of the other issues that have been raised in public comment are still being. Reviewed by the ad hoc committee and more recommendations will come to us. It's not, nothing's ending tonight.
Right, and the, the board is certainly not adopting any of these provisions merely by accepting the recommendations.
And can you talk us through? Um, seeker Ted, you have, you have made. Modifications based on feedback to the E A F. What happens next with the E A F?
Well, the next.
What, what has been modified in the E A F?
Yeah, um, well, probably, uh, I haven't done any, uh, further modifications to the build out analysis, so. That remains pretty much the same from what was presented last Wednesday. Um, I think the, the biggest section of the, um, environmental assessment form. Uh, that was, um, that was added was, um, addressing affordable housing. Uh, because there seem to be, um, a lot of comments and concerns whether or not the village board is, is, um, done enough. Uh, to, um, to help the affordable housing situation. And so, um, I went through and, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, identified seventeen or eighteen different. Um, uh, items within the zoning that, um, are all an attempt to, to try and make the village. Um, more friendly from an affordable housing standpoint. And these are not just. Direct changes to things like, um, uh, uh, but the, the housing type, but. Also other, other more subtle approaches such as, um, things that can affect the. Um, the cost of rental housing, for instance, in the village, like having excessive parking requirements, um. Uh, forcing applicants to go through a zoning variance process. I mean, these are some of the things that were addressed through the changes, the dimensional standards, the more. Careful, um, uh, uh, development of the threes, uh, residential sub, sub districts. Those all, you know, anytime an applicant has to go through and, and hire professionals to go before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, um, that's a cost. And so. If there are ways to be able to reduce the costs of, um, um, of housing. Uh, certainly, um, that's one, one approach to affordable housing and, and parking is, um, you know, I've cited some. Studies, uh, that have looked at the effect of, um, excessive parking requirements on, uh, rental prices. And it can be rather dramatic in hundreds of dollars a month, um, in additional costs, burdens of people that. Are interested in rental housing options. And so removing some of those barriers by, um, uh, by adopting standards that are more realistic, uh, such as one car per household. Uh, in the village, that's the kind of thing that can have an effect, an overall effect on affordable housing. And so that. Um, was in addition to the environmental assessment form. It's at the end of the form, um, and it, you know, it's the environmental assessment form is now grown to. Be, you know, seventy five or eighty pages. So, um, it's right at the end of the form. Um. I went through and I also, um, one of the comments last week had to do with, um, all of the numeric, um, uh. You know, calculations that were done in developing the build out analysis. And I went through just to double check and. Uh, you know, I made some very minor changes there to, um, to clarify, clarify some points that I saw in there, um, that should be clarified, but all of the, the basic. Assumptions that were used in the development of the build out analysis are there for anyone to, uh, be able to, to see exactly how. Uh, you know, we came up with, with numbers for like, uh, the number of school age children. Or how many vehicle trips, you know, what were the standards drawn from? And all of those are, are in the environmental assessment form.
So, so in terms of tracking and documenting. Modifications both in the text of the code. And in the E A F, how, how are you, how are you preparing to present those so that the modifications from? Beginning of this process through this process are documented for, for discussion?
Well, I, I think from the seeker standpoint, the most important point that the village board needs to be aware of is that. To date, based upon the preparation of, of the environmental assessment form can, uh, is composed of three different parts. Part one is simply a basic statement about, um, the proposal, um, that the village board had before it to adopt the changes to chapter one thirty four. Um, the second part is an actual impact assessment that, um. It's a form that has well over a hundred different questions that are asked about. Whether or not it's going to have an impact on land or water or transportation or community character and a whole host of other things. And there are examples that are provided, um, they're considered to be thresholds. And each of these thresholds, the question is asked, will the proposed action have an effect on? You know, and then it goes through each of those questions and asks whether or not it's a no or a small impact. Or whether or not it is a, a moderate to potentially large impact. And that helps, um, decision makers like, like yourselves. To understand the implications of the proposal before you. Uh, and so far, uh, there have been no. Aspects of the chapter one thirty four amendments that reach any of the thresholds of being a moderate to large impact. Um, and so, um, you know, at, at this point, the. Part three narrative is simply a discussion of the rationale in, um, in why. Each of these thresholds is not reached. Um, I, and I say each of the threshold, each of the relevant thresholds, because. The fact is there's only one of the impact categories and that's the impact on historic and archaeological resources. That was the only one that had any of the threshold, thresholds that was reached. And that is simply because the village is home to a national historic landmark district. It's home to a national historic landmark. It has a local historic district. And in addition to the district, there are individual buildings in the village that are listed on the national register. So if any of those are present. You must answer yes to that particular question. Other, otherwise, all of the other questions of whether or not there will be an impact on land, impact on water. Uh, impact on air quality and so forth, those are all answered no. And at this point, um, I think it, what. The preparation of these documents is leading to is what would be the adoption of a negative declaration. Meaning that the adoption of chapter one thirty four would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And if the negative declaration is something that, um, uh, the village board determines is appropriate in this situation. Then that would be the end of the seeker review process. And, um, and once we get to that point, I'll be preparing a resolution. Um, to that effect unless something changes, um, but I'll be preparing a resolution to that effect for the village board to consider. Um, making a determination that the adoption of chapter one thirty four will not have that significant impact on the environment.
It's just for clarity, not the decision that's being taken tonight, and I appreciate that.
Not tonight, yeah.
That long description of process. I was asking a really practical question though of. Uh, being able to compare changes from. That have been made in response to feedback from. Trustees, planning board, advisory committee, public, et cetera. Throughout the public hearing process, what are we going to look at? What, and what is the public going to look at to see what modifications have been made? The, the items that we identified tonight, right? The things we agreed to. Modify based on feedback. How are those going to be reflected? For the public and for us to see in advance?
Well.
Pairing aside by side, are you preparing?
No, no, not as part of the seeker analysis. I think, um, it's much more general, much more conceptual. Because this is a policy document that, that provides for new rules. It's not like a site specific seeker analysis that. Examine, um, the effects of, of land disturbance activities, for instance. It's looking at a broader concern.
Can I stop you? I'm not asking a secret question. I'm asking a really basic. Visual question. For what you will be preparing so that people can see. The changes that have happened through the public process before we consider a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm, I'm not sure I, I completely heard that question. Yes, um, any changes that are made to chapter one thirty four are going to be. Uh, shown by revision marks. So anyone will be able to see exactly what has changed between what was presented on April twelfth. Uh, to the public and what will be the final version of the document that is available for public review. So there will be a red line. In the same way that we have a red line that was prepared comparing the existing, um, I think the most recent is, uh, well, the existing zoning, uh, chapter one thirty four. And what has changed, um, between that and the chapter one thirty four that is proposed right now and on the table.
It seems as if it would be helpful to, I don't know if others agree to have. Um, a summary, a summary of changes. Rather than having to, if someone doesn't want to look through the whole document, they can look at. One page, two page, whatever it is, identification of modifications.
Okay, uh, I mean, you know, if, if you think that's necessary above and beyond the comment response document, because I think you're, you're working towards that. And now to go through step by step each of the, um, changes that are being proposed. There may be others that are going to be simple. Um, uh, corrections to grammatical errors, could be changes to typographical errors. It could be, uh, something having to do with a, a reference that needs to be. Um, corrected. So those are, are something that, you know, we could develop an erotic sheet that shows those. And then things that have somewhat more substance, um, such as the, you know, the changes to, um, let's see. Which one was it? The, the three stories in the R L district, you know, that sort of thing. Um, you know, that, that can be done separately. Yeah.
I agree of, um, more. A focus on the substantive. Um, changes in a summary.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll have a, we'll, we'll work through this process of addressing the questions methodically. Having discussion here as a board. Preparing then a next draft and a red line. The village attorney Jonathan's office will advise the nature of. Those changes, make a recommendation on the nature of those changes and. How to proceed in terms of public hearing process from there. You're not a yes. Maybe turn on your mic and.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, really, you know, as long as the, um, the public hearing is open. Uh, there, there really isn't an issue as far as reviewing the new drafts, you know, as long as the public has the opportunity to comment. There's not any other steps that the board really needs to take.
Thank you. Um, are there? Other elements of any of the chapters that anyone wants to bring up tonight? Discuss tonight? Say that again? Ted, have we left anything out?
I'm just looking at my, uh. I don't think so. I think we've gotten through, um, all of the items that we talked about today. E A F, affordable housing, updating the comprehensive plan, um, going through the, the list of. Of things that were recommended by the work group. Um. So I think we've covered it. Yep.
Thank you. Um, we'll open now for public comment. I would ask, there are a lot of folks who've been here with us before. Um, I would ask that you please. Limit your comments to new comments. Um, we are. Tracking all of the comments and they're, they are available as part of the spreadsheet. So if you've asked it, it's being addressed. You don't need to ask it into the record again. Um, Teresa Lagerman, we state your name and address you. Teresa Lagerman, we state your name and address, you raised your hand first.
Hi, Teresa Lagerman, eight Stone Street. I have a question, I would like to reference two things from the comprehensive plan.
Can you say that again, like what?
I would like to reference two things from the comprehensive plan. Do you give context by question? Section seven one five makes the following recommendation to make any large scale development, many, but sorry. Make any large scale development approval, we can contingent upon completion of an independent qualitative traffic study. In addition to the more common quantitative quantitative traffic study. And if appropriate, an independent traffic engineering assessment. In addition to that, section seven two two makes a recommendation specifically regarding the marathon site. Make appropriate classes to and from the marathon Campbell West Point County area. A prerequisite for any development there, ensuring that development does not create traffic problems. That will in reasonably adversely affect current residents. So my question is, will any independent traffic studies be completed? Before this proposed zoning for Marathon is approved?
Yes, is the answer, and someone else raised, it is, it is referenced in the PMU, someone else made the comment that the call out. Could be more more direct. And so there will be a section, there'll be a proposal coming forward on revised text for that area. But yes, it is in concept, and it is part from the very beginning of the. Special use permit process, a prerequisite, if it can't be met, if the access can't be met for the the project. As proposed, then the project doesn't get a permit.
So are we gonna see that the results of the study before the public hearing process is over?
Or when it? We don't have a proposal before us right now, we're not talking about a project. What we're talking about, the process we're going through right now is rezoning. When a project does come forward, right from the beginning. Is laid out a public hearing process in which financial analysis, traffic study. Infrastructure analysis, all of that needs to be, needs to be presented to the planning board and discussed in public before the permits are issued. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm just, I mean, to me, just. What is proposed as the new zoning with the fifty three housing unit?
That's not proposed, that is a build out analysis of the potential or what what could happen, there is nothing proposed on the site right now. What we're doing is establishing the uses and density that can happen on the site, there isn't a proposal for anything. When you build out a density analysis, you. Model, right, Ted, do you want, are you, am I clarifying? Response, okay?
Yes. Well, I I what I would add to that is that it is almost universal in municipalities that. That are reviewing applications for development approval. To not simply accept the recommendations of the applicant's professionals. But planning boards almost always will hire their own professionals. To verify the study findings, to ensure that there wasn't something missed, it's a it's a peer review process. And so in the future, it would be up to the planning board to to make that decision is to. Hire its own traffic engineer to be able to review whatever documents are submitted by the applicant. And to verify that they're accurate and that they are properly prepared. Meet and traffic engineering standards and a whole variety of other things. But this, you know, you asked before, what are other communities doing, this is what communities do. You know, big applications come in for development approvals. They're gonna undergo a traffic study, I think certainly in the case of the marathon area. That entire area of the village, because of its limited access, is is primed for having. That peer review process of an applicant's professionals and the village's professionals to verify and and ensure that everything is done, being done properly. But that is only done at the time that the seeker review process is activated by having an application submitted.
And so among the conversations we've had, and I can't remember if you were with us or it was before you started coming with making a more. Direct reference to chapter fifty seven of the village code within the PMU district. Chapter fifty seven enables the village to charge back. To an applicant for professional services to the village. So cross referencing that and building out language a bit more, we've heard the feedback that folks would like to see that language be stronger.
I think it's all.
About the process, and I'll let, and I'm sure there's other comments, but. If we're proposing this density. And then a developer comes and says, okay, I want to build. I want to max out that density, and here's my proposal, and then the traffic study says. This is not gonna work, this density is crazy. And this is not gonna work.
They don't get the permit, they don't get a special, they don't get a.
Then the developer be upset that the village approved.
The heart of like, of the, that's the heart of this, right, is that we're setting out the conditions. That's what's kind of special about these kinds of. Districts is that you set out the conditions in which they can operate, and there are more conditions than you will put in just a residential district, but. So there are all these conditions around. Traffic and other issues, and so they can be creative and figure out how they can. Create a development that does not have these deleterious traffic impacts, and if they can't do that, then. Then it won't be approved.
It dies, it dies at concept plan. And gets back sent back to the drawing board, that's that's the, that's the. The reason that it's laid out as a multi-step process, so that from the beginning. Of the conceptual planning, the public and the village understand. In whole. What is being proposed and what its impacts will be and can make good decisions early on and cut off at the past. What would, what could be deleterious, this is, this is the point of the the three part review. Which didn't, which didn't happen in the last big development in the village, right, and we ended up with what we got. So the goal here is to be actually, what we're doing right now is the process of planning. Okay, sure. Anyone else? Michael, name and the address for the record, please.
Sure, thank you, Michael Reisman, thirty Rock Street. Um, you know, I have four areas I want to cover, I I I will try to do it quickly, I'm not gonna. Recite the contents of the seven page letter that I recite, I provided earlier today, and I see a copy there in front of Jeff. You know, the first, the first category of the four is is process and transparency. You know, I have commented on this before, I'm not going to.
We're gonna ask you to keep to fresh comments tonight, please.
I was just about to say that, so before you interrupted me, I was going to say that. I have submitted previous letters, I have made comments at each of the public hearing sessions. In particular, there are some documents that I have requested via FOIL that have not been provided, they are. Things like the contract between the village and SECR. Number one, contract between the village and NYSERDA, I should say. Number two, and it's in the letter, but and and Mr. Vodakovich is well aware of these requests. And number two is the contract between the village and Green Plan, Mr. Finks' organization, these should be. Provided, they should have been provided already under the Freedom of Information Law, and I I would think. You know, if if we're gonna talk about transparency, there's a lot of discussion about transparency two nights ago at the school. In regards to the Fuhr Trail. And I think we need to have more transparency in this process, now, I want to talk about this. Spreadsheet, there's a version of it on the website, what was discussed, and I do have a paper copy of what was discussed tonight. My question is a very simple question. With respect to these comments, um. Is. The intent of the village board to include in a spreadsheet on the village website publicly available. Every question asked orally and in writing during this public hearing, yes or no? Let's see, yes or no question?
We haven't discussed that yet, we're in the process of working through, I imagine, some of the questions are, it is, some of the items are, that's a comment, not a question, there's nothing to respond. It's, there's no reason that it shouldn't be available, but it will not all be, there will not be a response to every item on the list. Because some of them are comments or commentary.
Okay, will there be, so will there be a response of any kind to? Items that the village board views as commentary as opposed to questions?
It will likely say, this is commentary, does not need response, we'll work through the through the responses, include them with the attorney before we post them.
So let me ask this question again, because what you, what you just said confused me, will every comment and question orally or in writing be addressed in some form?
On the spreadsheet, whether you get the answer that satisfies you is a different question.
Okay, and that's another question I'm asking, I'm just asking about transparency and addressing all the comments, because when I see her tonight and and Mr. DeJoy's comment concerned me a little bit, he had a question, oh, these twelve. Comments, that's not gonna be an issue with respect to 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 new drafts and so on, there's a lot more. Then, I mean, I know personally I have more than twelve.
Michael, I said at the beginning of the meeting that we are working through that document, it's a draft right now, which means it's not public yet. As the questions are answered, they're being made available, a whole document will be available.
Okay, well, I I thank you for clarifying, clarifying that, Ms. Mara, I I I just needed to know that because it's it's very unclear, you know, this. You know, what's on the website as of this morning, when I last checked, was dated May third, and it had a very small number of comments.
We're not finished, this is an.
I hear you, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to explain where I'm coming from. Okay, well, I I'm entitled to explain in this public hearing process, okay? My next question is, so, and just to confirm, so the the this ad hoc committee has been writing responses to. This, the comments that that are received from the public, is that, is that right?
The ad hoc working group is working on responses that are reviewed by the village attorney. And then recommendations are being made to the trustees, just like we did tonight, we're taking up those recommendations and deciding whether we agree or not.
Okay, um, you know, I I I'm not gonna touch on this, I'll just say, I I'm not gonna go through this, but I will just say, there are some answers. That were included in the spreadsheet that is currently on the village website or was as of this morning that are non-responsive, so I have provided my replies. To the answers that are on the spreadsheet, I request that my replies be added to the spreadsheet, and I have new questions.
It's not your document, it's the board's document.
I can only make the request, I can't force you to do anything, I I'm just respectfully requesting. That my replies be added, because I do not think some of the answers were responsive to the questions asked. So there are just a couple of specific things I I wanted to make sure are. Part of what is going to be provided, answered and or produced, so I believe it was two weeks ago, I asked. A question about an analysis of the changes in zoning requirements. From the current zoning law to the proposed one thirty four twelve, Paul Henderson said there was some type of analysis comparing the. Basically, the differences between non-conforming lots and conforming lots, will that be made publicly available?
I believe it has been, Ted. It's part of the EAF.
Yeah, I, if if he could, the commenter, if if he could clarify the question, not sure I understood the the question.
So so the, what I asked two weeks ago was if there is an analysis comparing. The number of lots that are non-conforming today. To the number of lots that would be. Of those, of those currently non-conforming lots that would be conforming under the new zoning code. And Paul Henderson, two weeks ago, said there, there was some sort of analysis like that.
Yeah, that was something that Paul Henderson and Eric Worth worked on for a number of months. And I, I think that's a question that we'll have to take up with with the two of them, because they were the ones that devoted. A a big bulk of their time to updating that dimensional table. They went through and they did the analysis based upon the e parcel data and so forth, because that was the the most efficient way to do it, rather than. You know, to get out there on the street and actually do measurements and trespass on private property and everything else, the only thing that we really had. That was available to them was the e parcel data for public and county. And so that's a, that's something that will take up the next time we're able to to meet with them.
I know that Paul is, I know that Paul is working on that to be delivered as a a full public document, he's editing it.
He is, okay.
Um, he's traveling right now, so I'm sorry that's not available tonight, but it will be available.
Okay, well, that answers my question. You know, the other. Thing I just wanted to mention, you know, because the the burden on property owners. And having to seek variances to the ZBA has been brought up a number of times, including tonight, in respect to affordability. You know, just, I I I looked at the first four months of twenty twenty three in terms of the ZBA activity, and the ZBA did not meet. In the first four four months of this year, in fact, they have not met since last year, because there were no applications and no business. That they had to attend to, and those, those are straight from the ZBA chair report, so. I I I raise that just to say, you know, in in, you know, I think it's really important, I think, I hope we'd all agree that empirical data is really important in driving. Good decision making, so to the extent that there has been, there have been no ZBA meetings, no applications for variances in the first. Quarter or first third, I should say, of this year. It's interesting information, it, to my, in my view, it undercuts an argument that there is a burden on. Property owners from having to seek variances under the current law, now maybe people are just doing things illegally. That's a possibility, maybe there's a need for more enforcement, maybe they're not. Getting building permits when they should be getting permits, and that that's another, you know, obviously another question to to answer, so. I want to move on in terms of my four topics here, and I'll try to make this very quick, or as quick as possible. The. You know, I I'm not gonna talk about my questions on the build out analysis, because there's a new document that drops today, and I'll I'll save that for, save questions. For this board, it's addressed in my letter, but I'm not gonna. Say what my question is now, because there may be further questions I have after reviewing the document. I want to talk about questions about proposed one thirty four twelve, in particular, density. Now, in looking at the build out analysis. What is possible under, for residential, under existing zoning at at the Marathon site versus what would be possible under the proposed PMU. I propose that the maximum number of residential dwellings in the entire PUD be set to twenty five. This would allow at least two hundred and twenty seven percent of the number of dwelling units. That are allowed under existing zoning. That is my proposal, my recommendation to the village board. In terms of the three step process. One of the things that struck me about the special use permit and. Process is that, you know, that's the one that contains all the various. Elements that have to be satisfied for the special use permits to be reviewed, there are items A through O, and they include. Things like the energy conservation measures that have been discussed multiple times during this hearing. My question is, why are those those elements, and they're, they're very detailed. For the site plan review, for the, sorry, for the special use permit review, why are they not included for the site plan review? Right, because we have, so the background of both special. Use permit review and site plan review, there's a background in the, in the code, I mean, it's it's as modified. Proposal of all the elements that the planning board has to consider for each of those two. Separate but somewhat related processes, and they're certainly related in the proposal. So there are. A host of marathon specific measures in the first process, which is the specialties permit, but those are not included in the site plan review, so.
That's a fair point, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if if you'd like, I can, I can answer that question right now, it's a pretty simple answer. If you look at page one thirty four dash forty three, this is the section, it's subsection B, site plan review and approval. It's clear within the text that. When the, when the applicant files an application for preliminary site plan approval. The preliminary application shell, in all respects, comply with the concept plan special use permit issued by the planning board. So there is a a section in there that. Comply with the concept plan special use permit issued by the planning board, so there is a, um, a section in there that. Does state that, that's something that, um, has to be, um, a part of the preliminary site plan application process, is compliance with that special use permit.
So they can't make any changes whatsoever to their, uh.
Nope, not unless they go back to get an amended site plan, uh, I'm sorry, amended special use permit. I mean, it's, it's pretty firm, it says it shall be, in all respects, uh, it shall in all respects comply with the concept plan special use permit. There is a provision within, um, you know, the, the special use permit, uh, process where. Any applicant that, uh, applies for a special use permit can go back and ask for amended special use permit approval. Um, and so that, that's built into the site plan and the special use permit regulations, um, any applicant in, in the village for any. Special permit or site plan would be eligible to do that kind of thing, um, but that's, that would force them to go back. And reopen the special use permit process.
Okay, that, that's very helpful, could I recommend that, uh, you know, to the language that Ted just quoted, that there be some. Parenthetical, or not parenthetical, or just clause, it says, including, you know, must comply with the. Elements of the site plan, or of the, sorry, sorry, special use permit, including. Those elements, and it could just be a quick reference, obviously I'm not suggesting listing them all out, but just to make it clear. I think it would be very helpful to the planning board that's reviewing the process, that they are, you know, the intent is during the, and I. Please correct me if I'm getting this wrong.
Got the point, so, can you carry on? We've got the point.
Okay, to make sure that, that there are no deviations, so, just to make, make sure of that, okay? Um, so, let me, uh. Get to the end here, um. So, and, and in terms of, uh, site plan review, um, you know, I noted that there is a single sentence, uh, for the final site plan, uh, approval. Uh, and it just references the general standards in one thirty-four sixteen point one, uh, why is there no specific reference to any of the marathon? Specific provisions. In the final site plan approval process. You know, that, that would be, I, I would expect to see that, there, just to have some specificity there, okay? Um, let me just double check that I, you know, there are others, I'm obviously not going to take more time to go through them, I just want to make sure I hit the, the most important ones, um. Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't want to step out of the room when someone's speaking to be disrespectful, I would like to pause for a moment to use the bathrooms, then keep, come back and concentrate on what people are saying. So, um, yeah. Thank you, I apologize. Okay. Hurry on, does anyone else care to make a comment, either with us online or in the room? I can't see who's raising a hand, Mr. Pew. Mr. Pew, if I could ask you to stick to new.
Of course, comments.
And do your best to contain.
So.
You can.
I'm going to touch on the process a bit, because. The.
Are these new comments on process?
They are, actually.
But are they new for the public record, Mr. Mr. Pew, I'm asking you a question, are they new for the public record, or have you asked these questions before, or someone else?
As to those, that's my question, these are questions, these are alterations. But you, 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 we can sit here and have this, Ted, 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 it kind of takes a lot of time. So, in the meeting of four twenty-six twenty-three, I asked several questions, I submitted thirteen in writing. Kathleen, in the meeting on five, on five-three, you submitted the questions submitted on four twenty-six, and placed in the spreadsheet, answered in place on the website. I found only five of my thirteen, that's.
We're still answering them.
On the fifth, I submitted eighteen more. This one, this afternoon at five PM, I found eight of my thirty-one answered, that's twenty-six percent. I think a more transparent process would be to list all the questions immediately after each meeting, and provide the answers as you're able. Next to each question, you've listed the person who asked the question. It would be useful and transparent to have the name of the person who answered the question next to their response. Two weeks ago, EPA released their sixth five-year review report for Marathon Battery Superfund Site. It's a fascinating read. Uh, let's see, a couple items caught my eye. Chart C one, Putnam County days per year with maximum temperatures above a hundred degrees. I quote, there's a slight increase in potential drought conditions. My interpretation is we've had water shortages in the past, we're going to have more in the future. The report addresses the impact of rising sea levels. Let's see, there's a risk factor for flood, the flood risk factor in Cold Springs, it's a chart C four. And I quote, a hundred and five of six hundred and sixty-eight homes have a moderate risk of flooding, I quote again. Seventy-six properties in, in Cold Spring have a greater than twenty-six percent chance of being severely affected by flooding in the next thirty years. Regarding the Marathon site, there are many comments about groundwater contamination bubbles, and while much of the data isn't, is improving, this statement is concerning, and I quote. Potential site impacts from climate change have been assessed, and the performance of remedy may be impacted by sea level rise. I believe that's consultant speak for what we've done in the past may not work in the future. There's a protectiveness statement, Kathleen is the village study this issue, and what, what, uh, actions has the village taken? We've talked a lot about Marathon. I'd like to talk to, talk, and I feel like it's the tail wagging the dog, the Marathon site is less than three percent of the land, zero percent of the buildings. I'm moving on, a little introduction always helps. We spent about an hour and a half listening to your introductions. You may recall that last week, I raised form-based zoning is not appropriate. Page of one thirty-four dash twenty-six landscape standards, I quote.
This comment has been made before? In the public record, it has been addressed in the public record, and it will be responded to. It is on the questions, it has not been answered yet, Mr. Pew, I take your point that you would like to see all the questions at once, no problem. No problem, we'll make them available, but the answers aren't already, so you're not going to see all of them yet. It's an iterative process in which we answer the questions you put forward in excess. I'm not yelling at you, sir.
You're being redundant.
You're being redundant, and you know what, you're, watching your display of, of hubris and watching you enjoy hearing your own voice gets tiring. Carry on.
Under alterations and non-conforming buildings, a non-conforming building may not be reconstructed or structurally altered during its life to the extent. Exceeding in aggregate cost fifty percent of the fair market or the fair value of the land and building as determined by dividing the assessed value of the land. And the building by the equalization rate, that's the tax code. Unless said building is changed to conforming use, this means for renovation exceeds fifty percent of the assessed value of the property would need to conform to new standards. Did you know that these two members of the current Village Board live in homes that are assessed dramatically below what they're sold for today? Using this rule, a major renovation right might require that owner to conform to zoning requirements, this might mean physically relocating the home on the lot in order to conform. It's ridiculous. Unlikely. I agree, as I said, form-based zoning does not work in well-established communities. Restoration, I quote, non-conforming building damaged by fire or other causes to the extent. Of more than seventy-five percent of its replacement value shall not be repaired or rebuilt. Except in conformity with the use and area regulations of this chapter. Sounds like for my house, it burns down, I can't build it back the way it was, I have to build it so that it looks like what is in this thing. We've got a couple of homes that have, that have burned to ground, and all the owners would be prevented from building the home they had, they'd have to build to the new standards. I wonder what this means for Forge Gate, Springbrook, West Street Condos, condos, and several other properties. Table six A, multi-family dwellings in a multi-family district. Note P three, three says, lots used for multi-family dwellings are limited to one building per lot and four dwellings per unit. Forge Gate, Springbrook, and the West Street condos all have more than four units per building. Proposed zoning suggests that if a major renovation or replacement required, the number of buildings and or units would be reduced. It's hard to believe zoning would make current residents homeless, but that's what I'm quoting from the, the suggested code. Two weeks ago, I spoke hypothetically about the, the, the taking of value by proposed zoning, Matt Francesco mentioned that my property.
That's such a cute.
And here are some others, there are twenty-three lots at the end of Marathon. Village lots on, would be of Village Water and Sewer have a market value around three hundred thousand dollars each, this is six point nine million dollars that won't be taken from the developer. Other properties that would be, have their value taken, sixteen Market Street, twenty-three Market Street, twenty-five Market Street, twenty-nine Market Street. Thirty-two Market Street, forty Market Street, forty-two Market Street, twenty-five Main, five Fish. Eight Fish, ten Main, thirty-four West, thirty-one Fair, and thirty-seven Fair, there are others, but those caught my eye. One last item, in the proposed amendments to the village code, chapter one thirty-four zoning law about civic uses, it says, and I quote. The village of Cold Spring is exempt from table six A, tables used as permitted by district, and table six B, table of dimensional requirements. Recently, I've been asked by several people about the village's own property on Fair Street. They say they've heard that the village is planning to move the garage. To the Phillips Town Garage and sell or lease this village property to a hotel developer. It would be a great place for a hotel, right at the start of, of the Fjord Trail. And as it's owned by the village, this administration or any future administration can do anything they want with it. My suggestion is if you do something, you lease it. Selling is a one-time hit, leasing is both, uh, revenue and, uh, control forever. So, my specific questions. Kathleen, Ted Fink's involvement with the village, does he or his organization have a contract? When was that contract put out to bid? If no, why not?
Questions related to contracts for NYSERDA and Mr. Fink have been submitted by you already and asked by Mr., and asked by Mr. Reisman tonight. I'm asking you, out of respect for other people in the room who would like to speak as well, not to repeat questions, this is not an unclear process.
I think you agree that you will post all the questions online immediately after the meeting, so I won't ask my next one.
I did not say we would post them online immediately after the meeting, they will be available, and that's the answer.
And they're submitted, this is.
This is all, all our questions are.
Questions that are given verbally are in a public session, questions that are submitted in writing are included as part of the public record.
I can both, to make it easy for Jeff, it's a cut and paste.
Process is already longstanding in the village, and, and that is the way that it is provided immediately to the public.
So will you list on the post all the name and the contact information of the person who answers each question? And if yes, starting when, and if no, why not? In an effort to be transparent with the community, will you provide a side-by-side list of all the properties in the village by address that shows their current zoning, proposed zoning, and the impact of these changes? Kathleen, when will you have an independent expert assess the financial economic implications of the rezoned properties and the proposed zoning plan? Kathleen, when will the village seek an independent expert opinion?
My name is Mary Foley, Mr. Pew.
On the total financial economic impact of the proposed zoning in the village and the taxpayers. Has everybody on the board gotten the EPA study and read it? Kathleen, does the comprehensive plan?
We are not on the main, first day basis, you and I.
EPA report. Flooding. Does your, does your work do anything to address the needs of the seventy-six and hundred and five homes noted in the EPA report? If yes, how and when, if no, why not, and when do you plan to do so? Rising sea levels and their impact on remediations efforts at Marathon, do we address that, if yes, how? If not, why not, when do you plan to do so? Table five, protective this statement, have we studied it? Do we know what the, what are our actions? My last question is, have any members of the board or any other village officials, village employees, or village representatives had any conversations or communications? Regarding selling, lease, leasing, or other use of the village property on Fair Street, if yes, specifically with who and with whom? The name of the title of the organization, when was the conversation, specifically what was discussed? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else care to speak? Um, as I asked of Mr., um. Pew, would you please? Not ask questions that have already been asked by someone else or by yourself? Just making sure. You asked the questions to the board, Marie.
Yes. The question to the board is about Ted's updated EAF, the updated EAF. Quotes the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles. Registration numbers for the vehicles registering. The village to be three hundred and forty-three vehicles. There, the. Able in the updated EAF shows approximately nine hundred and sixty, um, dwelling units. From the twenty-ten census, there's at least another fifty additional, which is Butterfield coming online. And what that says is that there's one car. Registered, New York State Motor Vehicle Department, per every three dwelling units. I can't believe that that's the case, but. My conclusion is that the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles data. Must be wrong, or it was query wrong, database queries can be very tricky, so the question is, can someone relook at that? Three hundred and forty-three. Registered vehicle in Cold Spring, it just doesn't seem right, it doesn't feel right. Next, in the spreadsheet that was, uh, referenced tonight. Question number fifteen was answered and striped. Our PDFs have problems with threats, I accept that, but that wasn't the question, the question was. The westernmost area of the village.
That question is, that question is still being worked on, Marie, that's a separate question.
Oh, it's shown here, no.
No, no, that, oh, what was included on? Oh, that's, that's, it's not done yet, the answer to that is not done yet, you're right, and we're following up on that.
Okay, great, um. Next, you, you mentioned that, that meeting next week is going to be on Tuesday. Tuesday is the, uh, school vote, as you're all aware, I'm sure. So, unfortunately, I will not be able to be with.
Available online, and we'll miss you. It'll be available online.
Okay. The term outbuilding is used in one thirty-four.
That question has been raised, that question has been raised, and it's in the list of items, you've raised that one before.
And the question was, what, what is an outbuilding?
That before, it's on the list. New questions, please.
Um, one thirty-four seven E one states that non-conforming buildings, that is non-conforming to table six B. Can only have changes which will conform to the new residential neighborhood standards. How can a building be changed such that it conforms to building placement, which is one thirty-four seven E four? Just.
Yeah, we're, it's a, that's part of the residence, I believe that's that section that we are looking at, Chloe, and. I'm sort of appreciating. I believe that that's a section that we're looking at, um, and, and didn't expect to have a, a response, thank you for your comments about it, Laura.
Oh. Um. Figure six two illustrates the required placement of an outbuilding.
Is that part of that section E? Is that part of that section? We're looking at it carefully, thanks to your feedback, and we'll be better.
Why was the prohibition of house trailers removed from chapter one thirty-four? One thirty-four sixteen, one D one states, and or subdivision regulations. I believe that this should be subdivision of land law as is stated in other sections of chapter one thirty-four. You made this a question and not a comment, do you agree? Shouldn't eleven Main Street be on B one and not R O? Why is three West Street R O instead of R N? Shouldn't sixty Carsonage be zoned MF and not R O? Shouldn't thirty Marion be zoned MF and not B two? Marriage courts do not resemble.
Been asked in the record.
Sorry?
The question has been asked in the record and is being addressed.
Okay, so. Then. The question was.
Yep, that question's been asked and it and is being addressed.
Is the area which in offices, the highway garage site, municipal parking lot, the wastewater treatment plant and Mayor's Park going to be subdivided?
Already answered that question, Marie. You've asked it twice.
What was the answer?
Yes. I I explained in the first hearing that they had that we had Badie and Watson draw a dividing line.
Yep.
Uh huh. What's?
That's not the question.
What's the question?
Is it going to be subdivided into two parcels?
No.
Why not?
Doesn't need to be. Or it doesn't need to be. I know it's hard to imagine, but other other zoning codes do. Have multiple designations on a single lot. Ted, would you like to address this? Or Jonathan, would you like to address it?
In the E A F, it states, according to the comprehensive plan, there are twenty five hundred on and off street, non driveway parking spaces in a village. This equates with nearly three parking spaces. It goes on to say, the E A F says, this equates with nearly three parking spaces for each household in Cold Spring. And here it says eight hundred and eighty nine households. Whereas the E A F is saying there are nine hundred and sixty three dwelling units. Not gonna get into that. The comprehensive plans twenty five hundred number includes private parking lots. Such as Foodtown, Metro North, Haldane, the churches. I would recommend that the twenty five hundred number. Should not be used to describe available parking in the village. It it is a combination of private, private parking and on street parking. Should there be a definition of school to include schools meeting State Department of Education requirements? Should filling stations be added to table of uses? Chapter one thirty four thirteen names the district parks and recreation. The table of dimensional requirements shows that the R district has parks, comma, recreation, amber sand cemeteries. One thirty four thirteen does not talk about cemeteries. The zoning map shows one cemetery in the civic district. Table six A does not with cemetery as a use. The definition section does not list cemetery. Should this be addressed? Property official fifteen official app, which is a residence, is shown on the zoning map as R dash L. The property is seventy six feet wide by sixty seven feet deep. Why is this property R dash L? Chapter one fourteen, which is swimming pools, sanchos and spas, references zoning districts are one and are three. One thirty four sixteen D four. References chapter zero four. There is no chapter zero four in the village code. One thirty four sixteen C seven says, the use shall be consistent. Use is here is in lowercase u. The use shall be consistent in the village's comprehensive plan, comma, design standards, comma, local water, blah, blah, blah. What design standards are meant here? How is it used something that is or is not consistent with design standards? Question mark. One thirty four sixteen one D three refers to village plan. Does the village have an individual designated as a building planner? Same section refers to the village engineer. Does the village have an individual designated as the village engineer? One thirty four sixteen one D three A five. The first sentence identifies the elements of a site plan drawing, which includes trees, six inches or more in diameter. In the third sentence, it spoke, it speaks to locally significant trees. However. Locally significant trees.
That's that section that we're talking about being that we're working on refining, right? So ho- hold that thought, because that's that's gonna come. You're gonna see a a version, a revised version of that.
Would it be possible for the new E A F? To be generated as a red line in comparison to the old E A F?
We've answered that question tonight already about process.
Okay. In the. Updates to chapter one thirty four. Put a red line be generally comparing the. My dates might be longer. The April twelfth.
We addressed that earlier this evening, that there will be a red line and a comparison document.
But not side by side.
What we said tonight was a red line and a summary document of modifications.
Why was forty five Fair Street zone B two instead of B one? One thirty four seven D four. Residential general residential general requirements says each lot shall be of a shape that is square fifty by fifty. Will fit to it will fit into at least fifty percent of a lot. R dash O. Of the table of dimensional requirements does not contain that. Seems like this is a conflict. Do you agree? In the table of uses, B four is shown is not permitted to have multi family structures. Does this mean that the Butterfield development, the senior citizen housing and the rentals now in construction are now nonconforming? In the table of uses for B four, which is Butterfield, why are one family dwellings? And one family to two family conversions and one family slash two family to multi conversions? And all in 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 the table of uses. It just doesn't make sense to me when at one point before A was going to have residential structures.
That is another question that you've asked and is being followed up. Are you talking about the the single family homes on Paulding?
No, no.
What are you?
Not the single family homes.
Or not B four A. Sorry, I misunderstood your comment.
One thirty four seven E two says, the modus modification of existing buildings is permitted. Common subject to issuance of a building permit. If such changes result in greater conformance with the specifications of this zoning law. This would mean that any building permit requires the owner to also modify the existing building to make it less nonconforming. A daunting and expect expensive change for some owners and buildings. It was seen that the statement should be the modification of existing buildings is permitted, comma, subject to issuance of a building permit. Comment, if such if such changes result in no greater nonconformance with the specifications of the zoning law. Do you agree? Yeah, table six A special conditions ten three says. Compliance with age restrictions for senior citizen housing in the B four A zoning district. Shall be a condition of site plan approval. There is no zoning district B four A in this proposed chapter. Do you agree this is a problem? Table six A special condition six is not referenced in the table. Special special table six A special thing you should one should be referenced in each district which permits retail businesses. And one thirty four two B, there are definitions of gross density and net density, but they are never used. In chapter, in that chapter. Should they be removed? The definition in the definition section of an accessory structure is a supplemental structure five feet high or higher. Or if lower than five feet, one whose length, width and height combined total sixteen feet or more. The lower than five feet section of that definition is not mentioned anywhere else in the chapter. Shouldn't it be listed in one thirty four seventeen A? One thirty four seventeen G five uses the term one family dwelling lot. What is a one family dwelling lot? Should this be? Something like a lot on which the one family dwelling is to be located? But in ground swimming pools. Be calculated into lot coverage area. It's not a criticism. It's just a question. It it's it's not in the in what wasn't the old one thirty four, not in the new one thirty four.
Good question. Thank you.
One thirty four seventeen G five states, it shall be a condition of every certificate of occupancy issued for an accessory apartment. That occupancy of such dwelling unit is valid only if the unit is located in an owner occupied one family dwelling. Period. This seems to imply that accessory apartments must be located in the owner occupied one family dwelling. And not in a detached separate building. This conflicts with earlier statements in the chapter concerning accessory apartments. Can that be looked into? Next one's a little convoluted. Bear with me.
Try to be as concise as you can.
I did have a convoluted one before.
Yeah.
And then for seventeen G accessory apartments ten. States except for home occupation, class one within the one family dwelling. And or a home occupation class two within an accessory structure. No additional use capital U shall be permitted unless the speculating is permitted. Has been reviewed and approved in accordance with the thirty four sixteen of the zoning law. In the context of accessory apartments, this seems to imply that a home occupation class one is permitted in an accessory apartment. And or in the one family dwelling and a home occupation class two is permitted in the detached. Separate accessory apartment structure. Neither use requires a special use permit. This could result in two two whole occupations occurring on your law. Is this? Insistent the village char- character?
Finished.
I can't do much more. Is that okay for tonight? That's plenty. Thank you.
Jeff, give Jeff the the printout of your questions. That would be very helpful.
Can I make one?
Go ahead.
Comment, um, you know, Ted has explained before that it's quite common after a zoning update to revisit it after six months and identify places where they're. Um, it might not be working as as anticipated. Um, so thanks to your reviews, Marie, we may not need to do that. I think you might have caught everything. But um, but anyway, that's another chance where we'll get to, you know, Pat and me. Any issues later on if if the board, I would assume that the board will want to do that.
But one, if there is one skill. Among many, your skill is editorial for sure. Thank you.
Marie and Bill, if you could email me your. Questions.
Questions.
Yes. Questions, comments.
Comments, but we're not responding to the comment necessarily. Anyone else? Anyone else? Being none?
Motion.
Second? Second. All in favor?